All right, it is 6:31, so we should get the meeting going. I will call the meeting to order with roll call.
Mr. Hazelhurst? Mr. Everly?
Yes, present.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Ladine?
Here.
Mrs. Maxie?
Here.
Mr. Moholland?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
I'm here.
All right, that is everybody but Brian. Thanks for coming out tonight, folks. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to see to the agenda? And if not, can I have a motion and a second? To approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kinzer. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Kinzer and a second by Maxie. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Kelly.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moholland?
Here, yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
And is Mr. Hazelhurst down yet?
He is not, Kelly.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
Sure.
Motion passes. I believe tonight, our only audience to visitors would be Tracy Shabaker, and she was to call in, but I do not see her there yet.
I'm here.
Oh, she is here, okay. Oh, that's right. You wouldn't show up on the roster if you're calling in. Thank you for calling in tonight, Tracy. The floor is yours.
Thank you for having me, and good evening to everyone. Can you hear me fine?
We can. Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, perfect. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And the reason that I'm addressing you is because I was contacted by some staff members who had responded to the return to school survey I sent them in November, because I was part of that committee, and who would rather not voice their concerns in a shared document. The owner of the document can see who the people are, so they felt they wanted to be more anonymous. So they contacted me, and I said that I would represent them tonight. I added a few of their concerns and mine to the document that Kelly Hanneman forwarded to you this morning. So basically, their concerns have fallen into, I put them into three basic categories. So I'm going to make this as short as I can. The first concern is how will staffing be addressed regarding exposure and quarantines? I know this has come up multiple times in meetings, even with the return to school committee. There's a lot of anxiety about this, given that we have had difficulty the past few years finding subs, and there are fewer subs even so during this time. And I was also on that committee with Melissa Geiman, where we were trying to attract and keep subs in our district, and that's been quite difficult. So currently, there's a team of teachers who are out of their building without having students in person right now. Luckily, they're able to teach remotely, but we foresee this happening more often once students return to the classroom. And there are just a lot of concerns about how that will be addressed. The second concern is comparing, some of them are concerned about comparing our district to other districts, because there are outbreaks in other school districts. Many students in those districts are being taught by assistants or aides due to their lack of subs. They have classrooms of students that are being quarantined, and there's also a lack of consistency in teaching this way. So thinking ahead, some of our teachers are very concerned about how this will happen and why we're comparing to others. The Boone County metrics have been consistently higher than Winnebago, for instance. For example, today, their seven-day rolling average is only 10%, while ours is 16.1%. So they're having difficulty listening to some people say that, you know, let's compare other districts who are in and they're doing it well. They're just trying to make the point that we have consistently been at a higher rolling average than other districts surrounding us. And then the third and final concern, which is the one that was mentioned most, is the fact that they really do, the majority of them, want us to use science and the metrics that are posted on the North Boone School District website and not wavering on those at all. And this is a point one of them made. They said, "If it's safe to waive metrics and bring students back under a hard start and not use the metrics, then why are all of the staff meetings and board meetings, including the one that I'm representing them at tonight, held virtually when the number of attendees at the meetings, say, tonight, would be about the size of a classroom?" And the last point, since the board meeting last Tuesday, the Boone County test positivity seven-day rolling average has steadily risen, as of last Tuesday, from 12.6% to 16.1% as reported today. And that was for Friday statistics. So this will most likely continue to rise after the holidays. So those were the main points. And in closing, my colleagues and I all agree that we want our students back in the classroom. I think that is something that every teacher, we don't, we don't want our students to be remotely taught forever. However, the differences that we have is our opinion about how to do it safely. And I just want to thank you for your time and allowing me to speak and considering these points from my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Tracy. We appreciate you calling in tonight for Audience to Visitors.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you also.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. That was our only audience to visitors. So that would bring us to unfinished business. And Mike, I think I hand over most of the information to you now.
Yes. So at our last meeting, I brought up the possibility of discussing and looking at a hard start. Tonight, I bring back to you more information, and I know the board has shared with me about 12 points of information that they were hoping that we were going to be able to share tonight. We have put together a PowerPoint that should hit most of it. We're going to talk about some of those options for return to in-person. And then at the very end, I'll make a recommendation with how we, as an administrative team, would like to move, are recommending to move forward. And I've got Carrie that is going to help. She's going to help on the instructional side and format of how that looks and how that goes. Melissa's going to help a lot with the personnel side and our efforts to make sure that we've got our building staff. I'm going to talk about metrics, and then I will talk about the recommendations and the options as we look at them. So at this point, I'll, oh, excuse me, and then at the very end, I will allow board to ask questions, have discussion, and really talk about anything that they'd like to talk about at the end off our information tonight. So at this point, I will turn it over to Carrie and let her talk a little bit about the instructional side of things.
All right, thank you, Mike. So today, this evening, I'm going to walk you through some of the options that we have for returning to in-person in second semester and after winter break, and walk you through the instructional models that will apply at the various grade levels, and talk about the pros and cons for each of the options. So you can see here, we have three options on the screen. Option one is a hard start on January 19th. Option two is to use our phases, but do them on accelerated pace to begin January 11th. And then option three would be to start with targeted assistance and then move to our phase-in plan, and this has already been approved. All of these options, no matter which one we go with, will use the same instructional models for our in-person and remote students that I'm going to walk through here in a moment. When we were designing our instructional models, we really tried to meet these three, or these four goals. We wanted to, as much as possible, provide equity between our remote instruction and our in-person instruction. We wanted to avoid simultaneous remote and in-person instruction for our teachers and for our students as much as possible. And then we wanted to avoid teacher changes for our younger students, because they've already spent half a year building relationships with the students, the teachers that they have. And then we wanted to try to have a realistic and balanced workload for our staff. So in order to meet these four goals, you'll see that our instructional models all either have some half-day options, or half-day in-person, or the A/B schedule. In our instructional model, you will not see students returning to school full-time, because we could not meet those goals if we did that. According to the state, we have to provide remote instruction for our students for the remainder of the year, for anyone who chooses to remain remote. So our instructional model for pre-K 4 is, pre-K would be attending those alternating weeks for the AM and PM pre-K. Our K-4 students would attend in-person in the morning, Tuesday through Friday. Their in-person instruction would focus on reading, writing, and math. And then in the afternoon, at home, they would engage remotely in music, art, and PE. For our students that select full-remote for the remainder of the year, they would engage in everything digitally. In the morning, they would have those exploratory and specials classes, and then in the afternoon, they would have reading, writing, and math with their current teacher. On Monday, all students would be remote. The morning would be used to provide intervention and support and small group instruction. And then in the afternoon, our teachers would have additional remote planning time to make sure that they can plan for both teaching students in-person and remotely. At grades five through eight, our instructional model is, in-person students would follow an A/B cohort schedule, and they would attend in-person two days a week and then engage remotely online two days a week. Our full-remote students would be scheduled into remote learning class periods, and they would attend four days a week in, online through Google Meet. For some of our exploratory and special education classes, we may not be able to schedule those full-remote classes. So those teachers may have to teach simultaneously, which is one of the things we were trying to avoid in our instructional models. But just with some of our exploratory classes and special education needs, we cannot avoid that with some of those classes. So those teachers would have to teach both the remote students and in-person students in one class period. At this grade level, all students would be full-remote on Wednesday, and the morning would be used for virtual interventions and supports, and then the afternoon would be used for remote planning time for our teachers. And then at ninth through 12th grade, our in-person students will also be split into that A/B cohort. Each cohort would attend in-person two days a week, but their day in-person is going to be a little bit shorter. They would attend only until 12:48. They would be sent home with lunch, and then in the afternoon, our remote students would log in for class, and those in-person students on the days when they are not in school could also log in for class in order to get some more instructional time. Only remote students will attend Wednesday morning to get additional instructional time for our full-remote students, and then the afternoon on Wednesday will be used for remote planning. This slide shows the instructional time for our in-person and our remote students when we move to this model. You'll notice that in some places, they have the exact same number of minutes, and then in other places, it varies. This has to do with some of the scheduling constraints. It also has to do with, you know, some of those A/B cohorts, and then students engaging in line on home when they're not in-person. So it's not exactly the same, but depending on the needs at each building, you know, this was as, you know, when we worked out the schedule where we could find those instructional minutes for in-person and remote. The next slide just walks us through in a little bit more detail the three options. So again, all three of these options would use these instructional models that I just walked through. Our first option is the hard start. All grade levels returning for anyone who selected in-person on January 19th. This would allow us time to make the necessary schedule changes that will have to occur for students in our secondary schools. It also will allow us time to plan our bus routes for all of our students who chose in-person. And then we would also then have some time to allow our teachers one or two remote planning days, as allowed by the state, as we're moving from full-remote to a hybrid model of having students attend in-person. One of our questions, I know from the board, was, you know, possibly a start date of January 4th and why we couldn't start then, right after winter break. Really, it has to do with those schedules, planning to get all of those schedules changed for our upper-grade students, and also for planning bus routes. And so that's why January 19th, as the second semester start, would be the cleanest place, you know, for us to do that in terms of scheduling, and give us enough time after winter break to build those bus schedules. Option two is an accelerated phase-in plan. And you'll see that this is very accelerated. What this option would do is we would phase in Phases 1 and 2 together, and those students would start on January 11th. Phases 1 and 2, and I'll walk through this, this is on an upcoming slide, but Phases 1 and 2 really include kindergarten, first, and second grade at our K-4 buildings, and then it includes our special education students in grades 5 through 12. So it's a small number of students in those upper grades. And so this would allow them to start a little bit earlier. And then Phases 3 and 4 to start at the start of that second semester, which would bring back all of our fifth through 12th grade students on that alternating A/B cohort schedule. I will note that with both Option 1 and Option 2, we will work in collaboration with the Boone County Health Department to monitor our internal metrics, but the external metrics of like the 8% and some of those other pieces would need to be waived for Options 1 and 2. Option 3 is to follow our previously approved plan. Option 3 includes targeted assistance, which is in-person instruction for very small groups of students, basically bringing 10% of our students back in each building, monitoring those metrics, then bringing another 10% back, monitoring those metrics. So bringing those very small percentages back. And this has already been approved, and has already been approved that we would work with the Boone County Health Department for phasing those in. And then for Phases 1 through 4, that would include that in-person instruction for full grade levels being phased in. The grade levels would return in those four phases, and we would follow those Boone County Health Department school metrics. The next slide just shows again those phases, and the overview of the grade levels are included in Phases 1 through 4. So in Phase 1, we'd be adding pre-K and kindergarten, and then we'd be adding 5 through 8 special education. Phase 2, first and second grade, 9 through 12, special education. Phase 3, 3rd and 4th grade, 5th through 8th grade, all students on that A/B cohort schedule. And then 9th through 12th grade, ELL and at-risk. And then Phase 4 would be all high school students on that A/B cohort schedule. And then the next slide, I believe, is Melissa's, to talk about some of the leaves and personnel.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm going to start with the Expanded FMLA. The Family First Coronavirus Act, the FF-CRA, was, it's set to expire on December 31st. When this expires, there will be no leaves or waivers available to staff through the FF-CRA. And this originally, from when it started, it provided, there were six reasons why staff could get additional leaves related to Corona. So one would be like if you had it, or if you were exposed. And one of the big ones was that if your child's school was closed, that you could also take some leave with that. So starting December 31st, as of right now, that is set to expire. Another type of leave with the FMLA, well, just a type of leave, is if staff have a medical condition, they can apply for accommodations under the Americans with Disability Act. And then we are working with staff right now to find those necessary accommodations. We have about 11 staff members who have sought out just additional information. Not all have paperwork in, but those are, that's about where we're at right now with just staff seeking out information. The next slide speaks to personnel. Currently, we have one certified special education teacher opening at Papa Grove, and we have three permanent substitute positions open. And then we also have six paraprofessional positions open throughout the district. As of December 18th, we have two classrooms that may potentially be taught with a teacher working remotely, and then it being supervised by a paraprofessional, another substitute teacher. And then all of those, so that's where we're at right now for openings in the district. And then the next one, I went through some of the MOUs that we currently have on file with our unions and how that's being impacted across the district. So one of the ones was that we would accommodate staff under the ADA, and that was included in our MOU. Budget impact right now, we do not see any budget impacts, but we're still waiting for some of those things to come in, so that could change. There's no impact to health insurance. And the staffing impact is we've been able to maintain some of our staff by providing accommodations, so they're able to continue working and providing services to students. The next one is that federal leave guidelines was in our MOU. The FF-CRA, which I spoke about, which is set to expire on December 31st, there's no budget impact on that. There's really no health insurance impact on that either. And since it's set to expire on December 31st, this is no longer an option for staff. The remote teaching option was available in our MOU. That is not, there's no budget impact or health insurance impact. Because all teachers are teaching remote and/or in-person, we did not go with that remote teaching option for staff. That's where we had like an entire day for a second-grade teacher to teach remotely. So we did not go with that, so that wasn't an option. So that's not impacting our staffing at this time. Something else was being, was allowing and providing some PPE for staff. Those were in the MOUs. Right now, we have about $600,000 at the beginning of the year that we put into our COVID budgets for a wide variety of COVID expenses, which would include PPE. There's no health insurance impact for that, and for staffing impact, we're again maintaining staff by providing accommodations and safety to them. Additional prep for remote learning, that was included in the MOUs. There's really no budget impact or health insurance impact or the staffing impact. That was worked into the schedules to provide some additional prep. And the extra cooker stipends was included in the MOU. This is a neutral or potential savings to the district for the budget. If an activity or a sport is not started and not played, then we are not providing those stipends to the coaches. So there's no health insurance impact, and there's really, at this point, no staffing impact.
Good enough. And then I will take over some of the discussion around the monitoring and monitoring of the health metrics.
Mike?
Currently, oh yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Can I assume, looking at our agenda, you're hitting various aspects, not really in order? Are we going to come back to each of them individually and allow the board to ask questions about each of those individually in order? Because it seems like we're kind of hitting some of them at a
They're bouncing around at a different spot. Whichever you think is the easiest to be able to come back and do, Joe.
I am, oh. It would seem more clear, I think, if we hit each of them one at a time and then move on to the next one, but it doesn't seem like that's what you have planned. So maybe present what you're going to present, and then we'll go back to the agenda items and hit each of them one by one, and maybe at least put them back up on the screen and allow the board members to ask questions if they had questions about them.
Yeah, sure. So I was going to talk a little bit about the health metrics, and as Carrie had mentioned, talking about the health metrics in there, if we were to take a look at the hard start, it would mean going away from the hard 8% guideline with 14 community members or less testing positive, along with 14 or less student, students testing, 14 or less students testing positive away from those health metrics. However, what I would say is, is those initial metrics, while we're talking about that, it's not a metric that we can completely go away, but instead of using it as a hard line, we would still use it more closely to a guideline. We would make sure that we continue to work collaboratively with the Boone County Health Department, as well as follow those trends that we're seeing within our community. So if our trends are creeping up highly, and Tracy Shabaker did allude to it a little bit, we have gone from 12 to 16, obviously, that's a trend you need to watch as you're trying to make some of those decisions with the Boone County Health Department. One of the things that we also use currently in our district is flu tracker. We also report COVID numbers each and every day. In my conversation with the nurses and my conversation with Amanda Mayo down at Boone County Health Department, we were talking about if we were to return to school, what kind of metrics would we be looking at if our trends were to start to rise? And one of the things that we already have in place is when some of those trends arise, whether it's with the flu or whether it would be with COVID, is that we have, I guess, something within our computer programming that begins to flag percentages that are, that are on the increase or on the rise. And once that that happens, it cues communication and collaboration that pops up from the Boone County Health Department already currently in place. And so we have seen this in the past before, especially some years when we've had heavy flu outbreaks, where they will be on the phone with us, they'll be communicating, we'll be working together about the next steps to take to try to manage those risks. And a lot of times, it means like heavier cleaning, touching, cleaning, sanitizing touchpoints. We have those things already in place. And then what it could mean, though, is, is that we would follow their trends. If there's a more severe outbreak, it may mean that we're asking a class to work from home remotely. It may mean that we're asking a school to work home from remotely. But we would then begin to work with the Boone County Health Department about the next steps to manage that outbreak. Like I said, when those trends do arise, we would, we would then use those things that we have in place, especially with our internal metrics, to collaborate on the decisions with the Boone County Health Department. We talked a little bit about the three options, and the administration is recommending Option 1 with a hard start. We are confident that we can, that we can follow the ISBE and the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines and work in collaboration with the Boone County Health Department to monitor our internal metrics and get that up off the ground. We would make sure that we follow those instructional models that are presented here for the rest of the school year. This, like Carrie said earlier, would need to stay in place, because we are required to make sure that we offer remote learning as an option this school year. And so to make those schedules and those models work, and the available sections for remote, this format would be there until the end of the school year. So like I said, our recommendation was to start, to move towards the hard start. Why? Well, it will provide continuity of instruction for all of our students. At the same time, this will allow for one plan for every grade band, not a new plan every couple of weeks with ever-changing groups of kids. The other thing that it'll do is it will reduce the amount of simultaneous teaching that will need to occur. And it really starts the second semester getting into one format for all. Our in-person numbers indicate that the class size will be between 10 and 15. And I rechecked with principals today, and our numbers do look like, for the most part, they're going to be between 10 and 15. I do believe we have two high school classes of PE class. That will be 16. But when you've got a large gym like that, you're better able to space with that, too, but those are our couple of outliers. The other thing that this does is it does benefit our kids in grades 5 through 12 to match instruction to start the beginning of the second semester. As we talked about, just with scheduling and the flow of instruction, there's a natural, there's a natural timing period there where this could make a good sense and a good move for our 5 through 12 kids. It also, it also follows the instructional models designed that we had for our phase implants. The models are the same. The big piece that this hard start kind of looks at is just the timing difference of how and when we bring the kids back. It will give staff, students, and family a firm start date, so that beginning, if this were to pass, we're beginning tomorrow, they would be able to start to make the necessary arrangements and firm up their schedules for themselves and for their kids. Moving forward, if a decision were to be made tonight by the board, I guess, one way or the other, it doesn't matter, we would be prepared to send a district letter out that could be sent to all staff and parents with communication of tonight's decision as early as tomorrow. It then would allow my principals also some time to make sure that they get building-specific and student-specific information out to parents, probably the latest by the first week of January. Really, I know several Really, I know several of my principals already have letters ready to go out with any number of options that could fall into place. And then it also allows our transportation department to make route information, and that could be sent really by the week of January 11th for parents at home to be organized and have transportation in place. So Joe, at this point, I do have questions and discussion. But if you kind of want to navigate the questions and discussion, if you want to take the order, I'll kind of help flow and go along with you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you all the presenters tonight. We appreciate all the time that you've put into this. Just for the benefit of anybody who might not be in the know, the list of items on unfinished business came from a request of me to my board members, asking them what sort of details they were going to need before they'd feel comfortable moving forward on a vote. So I would like to go back to a hard start and ask anybody on the board or anybody who's on the call tonight, if they had anything else they'd like to ask about hard start. And then we'll just go right down those bullet points. This could go relatively quickly, or we might get stuck on a few. Does anybody have any specific questions about hard start?
So I'll open that part up. My question would be that if we are in a mode where we're going to waive metrics and the decision-making process that went along with where we got to our plan, a plan that we haven't actually implemented yet before we changed it, why wouldn't we just come back on January 4th and get started with that part and shoot for a more lofty goal that semester of potentially getting all of our kids back in school full-time for full-day instruction versus this? And I guess the other part of that is because these plans have changed so rapidly since November 10th, why would we expect that this would be the last time that we would visit this this year? And is that really where we want to be from a goal standpoint? Is to say, well, you know, we promise you that this time, if you guys will go along with this one, that this will be the last time that we do this this year. The argument that we need time for doing bus routes. 20 years as a transportation director, I already know that those routes are done. We're going to put kids off of them. But we're going to still run the buses down the same roads. We're going to get the same kids. Not much, not much really impacts that as far as I'm concerned from January 4th. If the opportunity to get kids back in is valuable, I think the 15 days that you're wasting making up for Christmas break essentially is really not really worth having a discussion. If we're going to do this, I don't understand why we just don't come back on January 4th and get started on it and push ahead for some more loftier goals towards the end of the month as some other things come available. I'm curious why we weren't presented tonight with the idea that, or the opportunity to know that the staff was shared an email that vaccines rollout is imminent. We got surveys today asking us if we wanted to take those vaccines. I can't believe that that wouldn't have an impact on what we're doing and what we might do going forward. We also addressed one of the concerns that I think a lot of us had at the last board meeting when we have testing protocols in place. So I'm curious about why. I think I want to reshape this discussion. We'll get through the questions. But I really think that we really need to reshape this discussion about where we want to, whereas the board, we want to be. I'm somewhat frustrated with the idea that we've just been led along in this. The metrics are something that's important when it supports a decision that we want. But then when we want to do something else and the metrics don't give us what we're looking for, then we're willing to, we want the board to waive that. It's incredibly frustrating, and I think that the other part of that is that I think that what transpired Tuesday night, for lack of a better term, crosses the line of a written board agreement that we had with Mike that we weren't going to be surprised by anything that happened at a board meeting. I'm still struggling to understand why this has been done this way, why the processes that we used to try and make some decisions weren't in place. And if we're going to be asked to do something different, why it's not radically different? Why should we go along with this one when essentially we went along with the last one? Some of us moved a great deal to get to a position where we could be somewhat supportive of this, only to find out that the bar got moved on us again.
It's kind of a lot there, but let me, let me just first start with when we passed the targeted assistance and then also the phases back in November. I think all of our hope was is that we would be able to start to be able to use some of those in November or maybe even in early part of December as we returned from Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, it hasn't allowed for that to do. As you know, our county metrics were very high. We've since dropped significantly. We've had a little bump here recently. But the idea behind that was, is we were hoping to be able to use some of those phased-in plans, really that first semester. With that being said, through our discussions, the biggest reason that we brought this other option to everyone, the hard start, was just as we started to look at the number of schedule changes that would take place, the natural flow of when that that would start instructionally and wrapping up one semester and leading into another just seemed to, from a timing standpoint, lead to a natural timing spot right there of a good instructional flow and a good timing for students to get back into the swing of things in a second semester schedule. Carrie, I don't know, was there anything else you wanted to add with that kind of? That's really the thinking that went to that, Ed.
Ed, there were quite a bit of queries or points in there. Would you, would you maybe state a couple of them more briefly and succinctly so that Mike can address them? One at a time?
What's the motivation for us waiting until the 19th versus coming back on the 4th? The metrics that you alluded to in the first part of your defense of the position was that when we made that decision on November 10th that the metrics were lower, we were hoping to get to a place. If memory serves me correct, we peaked at 31% on the 16th of November. So I'm not sure that that necessarily comes into play. We're in far better shape now than I think anybody could have expected. And we took a lot of criticism for making those decisions and supporting that plan in the face of what seemed to be an outbreak that was heading in drastically different direction.
No, you were correct. I didn't phrase it that way. What I meant to say was, I think we were hoping that the metrics would start to come back down. And you're right, we peaked in November 16th, reaching up towards 31%. And they just, you know, they've trended down significantly. But as we've looked at timing, our timing, we felt the proper window was to hit the 19th of January.
So again, I haven't heard a reason for not going back on the 4th.
It has to do with the scheduling of five through 12. Our students then have to have all new schedules back. They're in the flow of one thing right now, and then what we'd have to do is reschedule students. Almost, I believe Allison mentioned last week, almost every one of her, every one of her kids would have to have a brand-new schedule then for, within another week or so.
So we couldn't spend that time acclimating kids to being back in front of staff and in school and then go with the schedules that essentially they already have in place that for second semester and go in-person?
Mike, would you like me to jump in and talk a little bit more about the schedules? The schedules at especially fifth through eighth grade will be changing drastically. We're adding a class period, a sixth class for every teacher. And all students will have to be moved into either an in-person section or a remote section, depending on whether they chose in-person or remote. So those are, have to be completely changed, and we can't start those until the second semester. If we brought kids back on the 4th, we would not have class periods designed to teach our students that want to remain remote. We wouldn't have a place for them. So in terms of fifth through eighth grade, there are all those schedule changes that have to take place. Some of those schedule changes will also have to take place a little bit at the high school. Not quite as much in depth, but there might be a few schedule changes there. And then with all of our grade levels, when we're bringing them back, what we need to provide to our teachers beforehand are some, is some remote planning time in order to get everything ready, in order to teach kids in-person and remote. Because we're going to be asking our teachers to do both of those things. And so we would need time to give them time to do that, and then also give them some extra planning beforehand to make sure that they're ready to do that.
So the next point, I guess I wanted to visit on is if, as I've heard that we've been told this is the last plan that we're going to approve this year, why would we stop here? Why wouldn't we have a more lofty goal of attempting to get kids back in as soon as our teachers and staff have been vaccinated and get back to full-day instruction?
So let me answer that one, Ed. That one there, we can't do because of the remote requirement that we are required to do. So because of that, we have to be able to offer those remote required courses that is required by the board this year, the State Board of Education this year. So we have to be able to offer both in-person and remote. And then that's where we get back into the scheduling, where that scheduling's got to be set.
When the first plans that you rolled out to us back before we left for school, we were going to do both at the same time. And here we are back to where we could do both of those at the same time, and now we're being told that we can't.
I don't know if I'm following you, Ed. Give me, describe a little more where you're questioning.
Why can't we synchronously teach the kids that choose to stay remote at the same time the kids are being taught in the classroom?
So we chose to go away from synchronous teaching because of what we've read and what we were hearing is the stress level and not only the stress level, but the detriment of some of the teaching that's coming along with it. Many schools that were starting to do this, we've heard reports from them that they're wishing that they wouldn't have set it up that way. So we chose it up, chose to set it up this way where we separated them out for, to try to maximize the instructional use, or maximize the instructional benefit for the kids.
So is that worth sacrificing the opportunity to get kids back in school full-time? That risk, that stress level? I would imagine there's probably some college professors on here that probably have been doing that for a while. I would think that there'd be ways to manage that stress.
That's the way we chose to do it, because we felt through our discussions that that was the strongest way for the instruction for students.
Again, if we're going to waive the external metrics that we used to start down this path, why wouldn't we be waiving them to get our kids back in school full-time?
And again, that goes back to scheduling, too. You still have to offer remote sections as well as, Ed.
But you've already said we could do both. We chose not to. What if the board chooses to go down that path?
This was the plan we brought forward because we felt that this met all those needs. That's what I have right now, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, for letting me know. It's a little hard to judge faces and everything to see when somebody is through or whether they're considering something. Does anybody else have any questions for Mike regarding a hard start?
I don't really have a question, just more of a comment. I mean, I like what Ed was saying. I'm good with where the plan is, but I'd also like to not make this our last plan. Let's do what we can to try to get all our kids back in at least full days, because I think we're definitely missing a lot of instructional time with this split learning. But I'm good with the plan that we got in front of us today, but let's keep working towards getting everybody back in full-time.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the hard start on January 4th? All right, that would take us to, well, I guess I would ask a question, Mike. Hypothetically, and let's hope that this is the case, vaccines come out and numbers go way down. This, you're saying, and I'm sort of getting to an item at the bottom, future plans. There will be no future plans of ramping more in or more days? This is the last plan that we're voting on tonight, just to be clear.
Well, that's where we're at right now. Now, I will say this, too, because I have gotten frustration from the board on the other side that I've been ramping too many plans out that have changed. And we've done that along the way, yeah. So I think all of us would be on the same page, the more instruction that we could get those kids in. But I think also, too, we're trying to hold some continuity here, so.
Any other questions? Or can we move to district-wide personnel risks? I think Melissa hit those already. She gave us a chart, put up a chart, what our current situation was. I think the desire was to make it clear how many classes at this point in time might not be taught or would be taught by support staff. And if we could put that back up on the screen, that would be great, district-wide personnel risks. And then I would open the floor to anybody who wanted to ask any questions about your concerns about district-wide personnel risks. Thank you, Kelly or Melissa, whoever's in charge of that.
Right there, Kelly, you just scrolled a little bit, passed it down one slide. There it is.
Can you explain to everybody, Mike, just maybe to start out, what it means? The classrooms will be supervised by a support staff member. Does that go, that goes with the statement above, yes?
Yes, that's from the statement above, yeah.
Okay, and can you explain what you're getting at there?
Yeah, so what we have is we have some teachers that we know will qualify for a medical accommodation. They would be able to teach remotely to their classroom in school, up on the smartboard. And we, but we would need a, need to have the class supervised with somebody in person at the building. And we would use some teachers' assistance to help with flexibility there.
Okay, so those courses would actually still be taught by
Certified staff, yeah.
Certified staff. There would just be somebody present, physically present, a support staff physically present. Okay. And so I guess the, at this point in time, we have no classrooms that aren't going to be covered?
Let's see, special education. No, we should have coverage for every one of them at this point.
Okay. All right, any questions regarding district-wide personnel risks?
So if we could go back to the MOUs, the MOU that we have in place today will be enforced to the end of the school year.
The ones that we have in place now, yes, that's what we have right now. Kelly and I are getting together December 28th to talk about anything that's going to impact us here off of the new federal legislation.
But there'll be no changes to those MOUs?
Let me find my MOU thing here and make sure I speak factually from that. So we will continue to work with accommodations.
ADA accommodations.
ADA accommodations, right? We've still got PPE, we've got face shields. Extra remote position. If we were to look for extra remote positions, our language would still fall into that category. And we still will be providing training and PPE and handling of COVID-19 situations for staff as well at this point.
And Mike, as I explained in my original emails with you, with the details here, I think what, the heart of the matter here is a desire, at least from at least one individual on the board, and I don't want to give any certain numbers, but that perhaps we consider opening that MOU up. Because what we're getting at is although the MOU stands, the application to apply for it has expired. It expired in August. And I think there, it may be part of people's, if you want to move board members, some of them may wish to see that MOU opened back up and a new deadline set to allow people to jump onboard and utilize that MOU.
Yeah, and I think what you're speaking to there, Joe, is leaves of absence, if I'm correct, right on that.
I believe so.
Yeah, and yes, I've heard that expressed by the board. Like I said, when we get together and have our conversations, we can talk about it. My big concern, though, too, is to make sure that we've got staffing to be able to run our classes to get us to the end of the year.
I'm kind of confused on this matter being discussed here. I thought this was a, considered a bargaining piece, and this was executive session. And whether or not the board would choose to go forward with it or not go forward to it with it would be an item for executive session, not And whether or not the board would choose to go forward with it or not go forward to it with it would be an item for executive session, not in public. That's typically how we've done other portions of a contract.
The MOU is already in place, Tom, so we're simply making sure that, that what we're voting on, we understand all of the details that go on. We're not asking, uh, oh, I wasn't asking for, for, uh, modification to it. I just wanted to understand where we were today and how it was going to be handled going forward.
You, I would agree. That's what you said. Uh, that is not what Joe said.
That is not what I said. No, that I would agree. That is not what I said. Um, I understand. I'm sorry?
And that's executive session, what you said. I would agree, given the status of an MOU is, is not, and that's what it was, but it's in a, in my view, it's inappropriate to bring up contract language and contract discussions in open session.
I think, I really think what we're trying to do is get closer to the intent um, versus, uh, making decisions on whether we, what we do. Obviously that would have to go to a vote.
And I guess to be fully transparent, Tom, um, I think this is a pivotal aspect of getting this vote passed. Uh, and I understand the details of that are to occur in executive session and, uh, but whether or not, I, I'm, I'm not really sure how we move forward because I frankly, if, if this is nothing that is even discussed, I think that you lose some votes, that, that this is pivotal to this discussion. And if that requires, well, we don't have an executive session on the agenda. So we can't go to executive session.
Anything that gets in discussion, I would bring back to the board in an executive session if it, if it strays from what our current MOUs are.
Okay. I guess we will, uh, any other thoughts from the, from the board? Mike, leaving that, uh, uh, leaving that discussion out then, any further discussion on the MOU? Uh, you, what other plans do you have? Because I believe that your vote tonight is at least in part going to be based on, uh, the willingness of the district to work with those individuals who wish to make the choice to, well.
Those, those, those discussions are already taking place.
All right. Any further questions on district wide personnel risks or review of the current MOUs? Uh, sorry folks, I sent this, uh, list of agenda items out to everybody and nobody spoke up saying that they did, they did not wish for it to be during open session. So my apologies.
Well, Joe, I thought when it was brought up that it was going to be discussed, it was discussed as a review of the MOUs. And a review of the MOUs is perfectly appropriate in open session, but discussing about modifying them, doing something like this not.
I, I think that again, to get to the heart of the matter, Tom, are we going to open those back up? And if, if that is, we don't really need to review the current MOU. Uh, we can all get a copy of the current MOU. What is at the heart of the matter here is if we're going to review our stance on that and if it's going to be opened back up. Um, that, so that it to be fully transparent and, uh, above the table, that was my desire to see that discussion in whatever capacity it could be discussed. And I certainly do not wish to break any, uh, executive session regulations, uh, but I, I saw that as a perfectly reasonable and perhaps pivotal and necessary discussion that should be had. Uh, and, but I will respect, uh, the board's opinion on that if they wish to discuss that no further. All right. That brings us to review of FMLA and leave of absence requests and waivers, which, uh, forgive my understanding or lack thereof may, uh, overlap with the, the MOUs. Mike?
Uh, Melissa gave you the chart of what, of the number of, of people we're working with.
And you're right, the, um, the leave of absences and, um, expanded FMLA, those were all part of our MOUs. And so I folded those into the MOU piece of it. Um, there's also a slide at the beginning that talks about the, the leave expiring on December 31st. Um, in those, um, accommodations under the medical leaves as well. So, um, it's, it's kind of in there, but I'd be open to questions if anybody has them.
So do we know the impact of the legislation that was signed or was pending being signed that was passed over the weekend, uh, on the, on the FF CRA? My understanding was that the funding to schools was, had a piece in that to, to establish or extend that. Do you know yet?
Melissa, I don't know what you've heard. I've heard, uh, the same thing you've heard Ed is, is about the funding, but not, not the, not the whole extensive details of it yet.
Yeah. The only thing I've heard is that there may be potential tax breaks or something for, um, organizations that offer, um, the additional COVID sick days. You know, we had like the staff all got, everybody got 10 additional sick days for COVID related reasons. Um, and so the only thing that I've really heard is there's potential tax breaks for some of that moving forward after, after January 1st. Um, but I have not heard and there hasn't been any, um, anything that's come out that I've seen that anything about the extended leave yet.
So if, if we, if we allow that to expire in front of you guys' desire to put back a hard start, what would be the incentive for staff that might be somewhat symptomatic to, to, that doesn't want to use sick or vacation time to not just come to work? If we're not going to extend COVID days to those employees?
I think that that is something that we, uh, possibly could still talk about.
When?
That would be go back into my discussion with union. And I'd bring that to you guys enclosed.
Wouldn't, uh, I, wouldn't, wouldn't a well laid out plan have included that piece? It, it's a serious question. I, I mean, Joe alludes to these being some pivotal parts of this plan for some of us. The answer to some of these questions, uh, while I, I understand the, the contract language certainly extended COVID days to somebody is something that we could do outside without reopening any other, uh, current agreements. I would think, I would think good public policy would dictate that we wouldn't want staff that needs to be quarantined or exposed at school regardless.
No, I would, I would, I would agree with you completely. I'd agree with you completely. But if you're asking yes, is that a consideration? Absolutely.
Any other questions about review of FMLA leave of absence? That brings us to the plan for full day instructions pre K through 12 by January 19th, 2021. Did anybody want to discuss this?
Again, I, I guess as part of a discussion, if we're going to have one more plan, why, why we aren't including full day instruction at some point this, this whole year as part of those discussions, um, I, I hear the, the rationale that's been presented for why we're doing what we're doing currently today. Don't understand why it doesn't set some plate lead with us with the ability, um, to get to full day instruction with all of the kids. To have the ability for, for parents and kids that may have felt uncomfortable because of the current, current situation, um, to maybe dip their toe in the water of, of returning to a full-time instruction at some point this year. Um, why we have the, these hard, hard, uh, numbers in front of, in front of ourselves, um, as far as, you know, you have to have signed up. It seems to me that, that as the situation is fluid and we've changed plans, certainly parents' uh, view and maybe desire to, to come and go from school, um, might change. I, I would think that that would be, that would be common, um, uh, just like it would be for our staff, just like it has been as we've tried to develop plans as, as the, the situation's been fluid for a while, um. Again, uh, January 19th is just a conversation starter, but I don't understand why the goal of this next point, it's not regular school at some point when vaccines and testing are here, are here, uh, right around the corner for our staff.
So I've heard Ed and Brian both, uh, um, point out to that, I'm marking it down, we're, we, we can have those discussions at the administrative level.
I guess for me, I guess I'm heading in a different direction with all of this. I, I feel like that, that we've been in a, in a position as a board where we've been reacting to, um, to what's changed. And I don't necessarily know that we've ever been in a position where as a board, we set a goal to say that we want our kids back in school this year. And maybe that, maybe I'm the only one who feels that way. I, I, uh, I think that I, I personally, as I reflect back on how we got to this point, um, maybe have gone along and, and been in a position where maybe we tried to accommodate too much, um, and gave too much away, uh, in order to maybe do some, maybe have done some things differently, um. I, I'm, I'm in the, in the mode of, of supporting setting a goal about where we want to be. And as, as Mr. Kinzer earlier to Tuesday night, put the, put the gears and the, and the keys in a position where, um, we state what, what it is that we want, um, for our community and our school district and put it back on the, on the, on our employee and our staff to, to, uh, execute that plan as rapidly as possible, um, to get us to a different place. I, I, uh, after Tuesday night's debacle, um, my view of all of this has changed. To say that, to say that I think that it hurt a little bit for me personally to have been in a position to, to have uh, accommodated some of, some of the things that I didn't agree with in the plan to try and get something to move forward and, and felt like I got sideswiped. Uh, Tuesday night would be a severe understatement. Um, I know that, that other members maybe have felt the same way in, in my conversations with them. Um, not really much in the mood for being surprised anymore at a school board meeting in public. I think it's time for maybe for the community to hear where it is that the board wants to be on this once and for all. And that maybe we give instruction about what it is that we want to see happen and to turn over the, the, uh, nuts and bolts of how that gets done to, to the superintendent and his team. And, uh, that we don't have any more of these discussions in public anymore.
Mike, do you have any comments regarding that?
No, I don't.
Uh, okay. That would take us to the plan for a targeted assistance post hard start date of January 4th.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, Joe. Are you talking about if we go with a hard start, what does the targeted assistance plan look like?
Um, that was not my, one of the bulleted items that I sent to you. It was, I didn't have any further detail on that. I just asked for that. Was asked that that be discussed.
Okay.
What I was, what I was looking to, to find out there was that we've got this targeted assistance plan in front of us, but it, from all appearances, it looks like that once regular school gets going, even in some hybrid form, that essentially that targeted assistance plan goes away.
That's right. I'm sorry, Ed.
My concern is that, um, if we have, if we, if these decisions have impacted kids, that we have a plan that takes them six, 12, 18, 24 months down, down the pike and stays with them to give them the assistance that they need.
It's a fair comment. Yeah.
I guess, Ed, are you asking for further details about what the plan is for? If we go to a, a hard start, what happens with those targeted assistant students that were in, uh, in a special need of targeting?
I guess, I, I guess Mike's answer probably answered it for me. I mean, when he says it's a fair question, I'm, I'm guessing maybe we have a thought about it in it, in the context of what the long term looks like. So I, I have my answer.
Well, I, I don't, Mike, could I jump in for a moment? The targeted assistance plan that was presented is, um, actually it's a basically a pre-phase one plan. So once we start getting kids back in through our phases or with a hard start, um, targeted assistance as it was presented would go away. Um, now that doesn't mean we don't still provide additional intervention and support for kids. That we will do. And we'll do that through small group instruction, either when kids are in person or on, um, Mondays for K four or Wednesdays for grades, um, five, five through 12. But, um, the targeted assistance plan as it was written and presented is really a pre-phase one plan to start bringing small groups of kids back, um, who are struggling because of virtual learning.
Carrie, is there any overlap between, um, our families who have, uh, engaged with the targeted assistance at this point or, um, kind of pre-setting these plans in place, who would be opting to go remote, who would still benefit from limited exposure, in-person targeted assistance that may or may not be offered the same way when we bring more students back into school?
So, um, we actually have not been able to start targeted assistance yet, um, because we didn't start it because the numbers were so high. And then, um, you know, with, after Thanksgiving break and trying to get through Christmas, we haven't started targeted assistance. Um, so our goal would be if, if we, um, do not go with a hard start, then we would start targeted assistance, um, fairly soon after winter break. Um, but our principals would have to send out communication and all of that to, to families to start getting those kids in once we know the date of when that can start. Um, in terms of then additional support, once we come back in, that's really where those students could get that additional support on, like I said, on those Mondays or Wednesdays to make sure that they're getting caught up and get what they need.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Uh, the next item was thresholds for future returns to e-learning. Um, Mike, we, the return to school committee discussed metrics and it seemed pretty clear from the discussions that occurred in that committee that people did not want to steer from the metrics. And so there is a desire to know what, at what point are we going to declare a point? Or are we just leaving it to you and the Boone County Health Department to determine when we would return to e-learning should the, the numbers go, uh, skyrocket again? I'll, I'll put it that way.
Yeah. So in my discussion with the Boone County Health Department, what we talked about was, um, those, uh, the guidelines that they originally put out and, and talking about them as guidelines. And what we talked with them more about was to say we shouldn't completely walk away from metrics, but how do we follow the trends? And once we follow those trends, how do we know when to start to look at, um, uh, bringing kids back to school? And when do we start to, uh, if we are in school, when do we start to watch about pulling back or backing off? So, um, as I explained on, um, slide 16, we would continue to use the, those metrics that the, the health department has given us. And when they talk to us about it, they say that those are guidelines. And their, their comment to me now is that if you can follow the guidelines that are given by the ISBE and the IDPH, that if you can follow those, they can support our decisions to bring back kids. I don't think we should completely walk away those guidelines though, but I do think that we, um, uh, if we're going to look for opportunities to try to find a way, bring kids, kids back, we could be, we could be waiting a while. And uh, uh, this was an attempt to try to find a way to get kids back in the door when we know kids are struggling. Then if, if metrics were start to go high, as I said, we have, we have things in place already that can work on internal metrics with discussions from the Boone County Health Department and follow their guidance from there.
Do you see the return committee, return to school committee being brought in on that decision-making at all?
If that is a step that you feel would uh um would help, I, I felt like the return to school committee was looking for um good ways, logical ways, safe ways to bring kids back to school. And I felt that this one uh was an effort to try to find yet another way to bring kids back.
Uh, maybe I would throw that question out to Tom because he was particularly interested in the return to school and it's, it's a committee and it's interest in metrics or maybe Brian, do either of you have any thoughts on that to share?
As far as the metrics go and you know, coming up with a plan as far as when to pull back or when we have to quarantine a, a classroom, I think uh the Boone County Health Department would be the, and the nurses would be the ones that make those decisions.
Tom, are you okay with that answer? Does that jibe with what you're thinking?
I'm fine with that. I I think the return to school committee, if the administration team was looking for um you know, a wider input, maybe what the community's feelings were or staff that they didn't feel that they were getting from what they're trying to do internally or with the staff, you know, I think then maybe that would be a good function for the return to school committee. I don't, as I've tried to express in two or three meetings, my view of the metrics has evolved. I am comfortable with what I hear the administrative team. I don't know if I understand the exact part, having not said in the discussions of what they plan on doing with the health department. But I am comfortable with the way that the superintendent has described them tonight um using them going forward. I think that's a more appropriate use of metrics in today's environment, so.
Any other questions about thresholds for future returns to e-learning? All right, that brings us to communications to parents. Uh, if there are to be no future plans, then I guess communications to parents doesn't really uh isn't really necessary. The, the question was posed um that we have been quickly changing plans up, up to this point in time. And um exactly how much leeway were we going to give parents before we changed the next plan? But I, if I write an understanding, Mike, there will be no next plan.
Well, now I heard uh from a couple of board members tonight that if we could be open to possibly getting kids back to full days, that that is something we should consider. And I do see value to finding ways to get kids back into instruction, so. If people are not opposed to shifting on the fly, which we've done all through COVID nineteen, we can continue to look at ways to, to grow instructional uh instruction at, at in-person instruction.
And I guess Ed, since that comment has come up a couple of times, I think I would weigh in as I understood what Brian and Ed say, said. And um I think in today's world, what the plan today, if it gets modified um in a couple of months. Um, and that seems to make sense from teaching of the students, the staff, to the community, to where the vaccine is. I would see no reason why I would want to tie the administration's hands to say, well, we said back then, we weren't going to change it again. My only concern on the changing part is as long as we're sensitive to staff, to parents that have made childcare, that when those pieces come into play, that to me is what you need to be sensitive to. But I'm, my assumption has always been is that you are sensitive to that, that you are taking that into account um with these various plans that have come out. So I think as I understood the other board members, I would not want to hold the team to that this is the final plan. We can't change anything till fall of next year, so.
It wasn't my understanding, Tom, that we were holding them. That was my understanding from conversations with Mike. Mike had no plans to present any plans after this. If, am I correct in that, Mike? But I get that you might be hearing now a different directive.
Now, wait a minute. And, and I want to tell you that I was told, here we are switching plans again, and I got frustrated, I, I sense frustration from the conversations that I picked up on board members now. Now tonight's a different switch, so.
Then you, once again, misread my interpretation. I want one more final vote on what we're going to do for the next, for the rest of the school year tonight.
All right, let's, one last vote. Let's discuss that at the end. Is that okay, Ed, if we bring that up?
Okay.
That's, that's, that's not a motion. Am I to understand that correctly? Ed, you aren't making a motion at the moment.
Not at the moment.
Thank you.
But Joe, to go back to your question, I do feel it's my job every, every day to do what is best for kids. And if it means changing, I can change. If it means that we need to hold something that's consistent because uh the change is hurting us, then I think we need to evaluate that as well.
But again, to be clear, Mike, based on our, our discussions to this point, you, you explained to me that this would be the last vote. And I'm not saying whether or not I approved or disapprove of that plan. But up until this meeting right now, you really had no intentions to present another plan.
So we shared that we would be prepared to use this till the end of the year unless the board is looking to do something different.
Okay, and so.
Or provide us with flexibility.
I, I'm making no judgment to that stance at all, and I'd like to be clear to the board for them to consider whether they're going to give you the directive to change that plan again. That's something for us to consider. Uh, we'll, we'll get back to that at, at the end of these items. Um, that brings us to communications with the district. Did anybody want to ask Mike about any, anything regarding communications to the district? I guess which would be hinged on whether or not there is going to be another plan.
Mike, have you had a chance to review the comments that the board received um today over email? I know that we got a lot of staff and, and teacher comments back.
Yeah, I was able to.
Any reflections on um the information that we received?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, it doesn't matter what plan we put together. Um, you see uh just about any, any, any version you put together. Um, the people that are uneasy with it, the people that are comfortable with it. And it's, it's absolutely impossible to come up with a perfect plan that everybody's able to um completely get, get their um I, I guess their arms around and all embrace, so. It's just kind of the sign of the times with this.
All right, that brings us to the equity between remote and in-person.
I've been holding this kind, the, the question here just for a little while. And Carrie, if we can go back all the way to the kind of first part of the presentation tonight, um, it looks like we're in a lot of the planning for how we're balancing our remote versus in-person instruction. Um, we're really focusing on seat time and hours that students are being instructed and minutes that they're being instructed. And I'm curious, have you, what, what conversations we've been having about equity that's a little bit more um qualitative in content? Uh, you know, I think probably all of our teachers at this point, those that hadn't had any online instruction and experience and, and um even those that had had some, the different modalities present different challenges and the pacing of the content that can be delivered is different. And so as we begin to uh diverge in our instruction methods, how are we evaluating equity, equity both in content and in time?
So in terms of um evaluating, you know, the, the equity of, of the content, you know, some of what we're trying to do. In, in terms of evaluating the equity, I don't, I'll be honest, we don't have a way to measure that. Or we haven't planned a way to measure that yet. Um, but you know, part of what we're trying to do, especially at, you know, our high school where you know, we do see that there's going to be kind of a, you know, a wider discrepancy between um the in-person instructional time versus the remote instructional time. Um, and some of what we've been trying to do even now is, you know, a lot of those asynchronous activities to allow students time before they come to class, you know, to watch some of the videos, to get, you know, some of those things done. Um, so that way when they come and engage in, with their teacher, they can actually be engaging with their teacher and not like absorbing content. Um, so some of, you know, that we're, some of those things that we're, we're having, we're trying and having our teachers do is, you know, kind of like that flipped classroom model. Not that it's a full flipped classroom model, but um and at our older upper grades, that's a little bit easier for some of our teachers to do. And so I know our high school can utilize a little bit more of that, um, especially for our full remote students. And so um, you know, otherwise, you know, we don't really have a way, we have not developed a way to evaluate that, at least on my end. Now, I don't know if Mike has had conversations um with the principals around that either. But it's, in my end, we haven't developed in a way, a way to evaluate that.
Um, is that, are they conversations that are happening? Is that something that we, we'd like to do? Is that the type of thing that we should, not that I'm saying let's punt, but get, get feedback on from a curriculum committee if you want this at a board level or, or I'm just curious where, where we're at as a district on, on that stage of the planning.
I think it's something we can look into. We haven't started planning for it yet. So I think to look at how we're going to evaluate some of this. I mean, some of what we'll do is what we've always, what we always do, like at the, is our curriculum review. Um, and some of our, of that, those um vertical articulation meetings that we can do at the end of the year between, you know, as students go from seventh to eighth grade or as they go from eighth to ninth. Um, what are those things that we were able to, to focus on? Um, some of the conversations that, that we also have had early on in the year, um especially at our elementary levels is really using the priority standards from the state um to really narrow our scope of what we're trying to teach in this school year, um really focus on those priorities. But um we haven't circled back um to, to that conversation at this point.
And I don't want to put anyone on the spot and um so I, I, please don't interpret this question in any way in an antagonistic way. Um, but I'm curious now that we've been almost through half a year solely remote. Um, are we getting feedback from our instructional folks that were, those that are in the classroom that were kind of where we want to be? How do we feel about the pacing? Um, the way that, that our students are, are learning? Um, what's just some general feedback that we've been getting? Uh, as far as that, that kind of quality of instruction and, and um how we're meeting goals?
And that might be something we need to put together with the principals, Carl, to get some feedback on that. I know that they have done obs- uh informal observations and, and things through, you know, just the regular protocol that we have for observation and evaluation, but um as far as like um detail for me to provide to you tonight, I wouldn't have that. Not with me tonight.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Any other questions about equity? Any questions about future plans? Um, the unions did share at earlier this morning. We've got some input from the unions and we want to thank them for their input. Uh, that brings us to the end of the discussion points that were requested for tonight. Any general discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to interject that I kind of, I kind of going back to what happened on Tuesday night, I think was grossly unfair uh to the group. Um, I, I uh, I've spent enough time around the school district in my day to understand that having parents that were well aware of, of what was going to be asked to be voted on by the, by the board, have that information before we really had it. Um, it's something that, that I, I think is completely, completely out of line. Um. I think that I've, I think that the group has, has done what it accounted to try and hold up to their end of the no surprises edict that, that we all signed on to, to start with. Um, for something to go from informational to we have to have a decision tonight so that we can do this, or we'll have to have another meeting is, is, is really, really um has really crossed the line. Uh, I think in what's fair uh for volunteers that aren't in, in contact with us every day. I, I really, I really feel that the need to go in a different direction with how we handle this from now on.
Any other thoughts? I, I'm, I'm really not sure where I, as the president, take this discussion now. Um. I'm, after hearing the rollout tonight, I am even more so thinking about whether how we do this, how, how we have a protocol in place that works, because I, I feel like we're in a bit of the same situation that we were last Tuesday and whether or not the board needs to somehow work with Mike uh in an advisory role, because what I fear happened, and I shared this with Mike. Um, what I fear will happen tonight and, and what I don't want to see happen again tonight is that somehow in the end, the board is keeping, seems to be keeping Mike from moving forward on what he and his admin want to move forward on. They presented us with numerous plans and in the end, we, we want protocols to be followed. We want assurances to be made. Yeah, and I'm not sure that we got there tonight. I, I think there's maybe even more in question than there was uh on Tuesday for, for some people. So I'm not really even sure what to suggest at this point in time. And I wish I did. I wish I could be more help and, and drive us forward somehow. If anybody else would like to, to speak?
Well, whatever plan we uh we end up going with here tonight, I would definitely encourage uh the administrators to keep working to get all our kids back in there. I, I, I like what I'd had to say about our goal should be to get our kids back full time, but that being said, we need to do it safely also. But things are fluid, so I expect things to change. I'm okay with it. We need to do that as a district, so.
Anybody else? Anybody want to voice any option? What are our options at this point in time? Uh, I guess we have three options laid before us. Mike has laid three options before us.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, hold on. Brian, can you hold on a second?
I absolutely can.
Okay, let, I want to make sure that I follow along and jot this down. Well, go ahead.
I'm, make a motion to approve the option one with the hard start on January nineteenth as presented.
Okay. Prove option one on January nineteenth as presented. That is a motion by Hazel Horst.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Rudy. Discussion.
So if I, I can interject, what, why would we stop there? Why wouldn't we open this up? Um, allow a different, a different process to go through. Why do we want, why do we want to keep going through the? I don't, I don't understand where we are. This is, this is clearly not working. Why do we want to keep doing this to ourselves?
Which part, Ed?
Ed, I don't, I don't disagree. I don't want to stop here, but I mean, I think this is a good starting point, honestly. We need to, we need to start somewhere and get. Ed, I don't, I don't disagree. I don't want to stop here, but I mean, I think this is a good starting point, honestly. We need to, we need to start somewhere and get moving.
No, there's, there's, I'm, I'm asking that question, not not rhetorically, in the sense of, are you specifically talking about the hard start plan on the 19th, Ed, or are you talking about the process?
I I'm talking about the process. Why do we want to stop here? If if we're going to adopt option one, then why don't we at the same time create a different mechanism for for how we get to to what the next steps are versus going through all of this? Why? Why do we want to continue to do this? Why do we want to continue to put ourselves with? No matter how the discussions are, I mean, this is the only forum we have to get the information that we have. It looks, it has to look to the public like this is, like this is chaos. And to be honest, that's how it's it feels to us too. I've talked to enough of you to know that that's where we are. Why do we want to create a process where we approve this so we guarantee that we get to do this again in another month?
And I guess the the best worst answer I have that is that is what our admin has presented us with.
Yeah, and the fact that they change constantly, it's not, you know, we have a vaccine that's becoming available now. So I mean, it's it's been fluid through this whole whole process. We're going to have to adjust as it comes at us.
And I I'm I'm sympathetic with Ed in a lot of respects, what one of the where we ended up last week, having gone through that process in November, having gone through it in October, I don't we need to find a more constructive way to be able to pivot quickly, if that's what we wish. And having a two-day notice on a pretty dramatic change in plans, when we as a board are only meeting once a month, unless we call special meetings, is is not the type of autonomy that if we want to make changes like this, that we've granted our administrative teams the ability to do, we can't, we can't make pivots that fast. And that's just, that's not even, I'm not, I'm not making a, I'm not trying to be critical, only in the sense of structurally, we are not set up that way. And we have, as a board, a precedent for structural checks through this process. We had the return to school committee, we had phased in plans that we were looking at, and it's cumbersome, and it was inefficient, and at times felt micromanaging, for sure. But as a board, that was the process that we agreed to follow and and the precedent that we set. What last week's, what last week's meeting was, was a departure from that. I'm not opposed, and in fact, I think at times have been vocal in support of trying to figure out how to give our administrative team more autonomy to make these decisions quickly and to pivot as the situations change, as that's merited. But I I really resonate with what Ed's saying in that in a month, if we've put hard limits on something and haven't granted more than two months, or whatever that window looks like, if we haven't figured out a way to grant Mike and his team, if we haven't delegated to them appropriately, we're going to be back here again kind of spinning our wheels.
Well, I definitely think those are good points, Carl and Ed. So I mean, maybe that's something we should bring up at our next board meeting on how we can turn more of this over to the admin team.
I guess I can't, we can't, I don't, I don't really know that it's a discussion that we can talk about what might be an alternative to a motion that's already on the floor. We can discuss this motion, but I'm kind of hoping to get a chance to have this discussion before we had motions on the floor about what what else we might want to do.
Well, I yeah, I mean, I I see these as pretty related conversations, Ed. So I don't, I don't know that we've departed too far from the spirit of the motion, given that it incorporates what moves forward too. But yeah, I see your point.
I guess where I'd like to see us end up was to give the autonomy, give that autonomy that you were talking about back to the board as part of this, or excuse me, back to the admin team as part of this with the parameters that they're going to have to work within the existing MOUs and leave of absence process, that they're going to have to incorporate the the stated goal of of in-person, full-time instruction at some point. How they get there, not necessarily part of what we need to get involved in on a weekly basis. But at the same time, I think we're probably forced maybe for the first time for them to be in contact with their staff. For certainly the nurses to be in a more prominent role in deciding what's safe for for kids to go be back in school and staff. But I think also, more importantly, have to engage teachers directly one-on-one to make sure that all of our staff and all of our people are in buildings and and ready to, ready to receive instructions and have have the ability to to offer that instruction to our kids, because we really owe it to them to make sure that we have a safe learning environment for everyone, including our staff. I just, I think that what we need, what we should have done in this was to state a goal. But how we get there, when we get there, and who decides how we get there should be turned over to the to the superintendent and his team to decide so that they can flux and get get us where we need to be. This, I think it should be flexible in that kids who can enroll either to choose to be in 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 remote or be in person at their leisure and whatever they feel comfortable with. And that the staff has has the same ability to be somewhat flexible. So that, those were the parameters that I think we should have laid out in approving this plan, that that we not only support option one, but also pivot in another direction. So that we we essentially go back into an evaluation standpoint and evaluate how the superintendent and his team executed our plan. And not get ourselves in a position where we're the ones that are blamed for everything that 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 doesn't come down the way the community wants it to.
We have a motion and a second, motion by Hazel Horst to approve option one on January 19th as presented. And a second by Rudy. Any other discussion?
I guess without saying that I agree or disagree with what Ed is saying. If, I don't know if I heard the exact making of what a motion would be there, Ed. But if you feel that that motion should be modified to include something like that, you can always amend Brian's motion and then look for a second to do it, and then there's a vote on that. So it isn't like you can't have what you want right now or or have that, but I would, I don't know if I followed everything. What I heard was in in my mind, a difference in one sense, you're talking about giving the administrative team autonomy and giving them a way to go. And then at the other time, you're putting very specific goals that almost ties them in on a certain way. And I, my thought of autonomy is, is that we'd like our kids back in school. And if that was the impression that you got from other board members or from things that you wanted one plan and that's it. My sense is that this hard start, I'm in agreement with it. I haven't heard anything that would make me go against it. And if you feel you can do better, which in my mind, better is more kids back in school, maybe longer days, more days than have had it. If you need a motion to, the emotion amended to say that, I'm all for saying for amending it on something like that, but I yeah, I I don't feel that you because one person comes in with a motion that you ought to feel that your options are 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 gone or or absent that, so. With that said, I
Well, regardless of the motion, Mike has the autonomy to make whatever other suggestions or whatever other plans he wishes down the road. Am I mistaken?
I think he has those options, but if he feels, what I got from Mike in this was that he felt that he was don't waste your time. That you want to, you're, you don't want changes of plans, and why would you create plans if if you're, you know, you want something to go through the rest of the school year, so. I don't know. It's it's hard to have this and get a, you know, with Joe, you and I didn't come up with the same interpretation of what review MOU MOUs are, so. That it's it's hard to get everyone's exact feeling of what we think we're discussing and things, so.
Well, I I think it has become clear at this point, it would be my desire to move out of the way. It, we have time and time again. I think in 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 all of these plans, the board has somehow ended up being a roadblock to Mike's plans, and I I don't think that's the position any of us want to be in. So the intent to for this to be the last vote only came out of my mouth, because that's what I heard out of Mike originally. But I I thought that was his desire, but he had heard no, it, no directive from the rest of the board. But I I sincerely think that this last Tuesday, and I cannot say tonight, that I feel any better about the the way to the protocol we're following. The way we're making votes. The way we're making motions, I this, I don't know what the solution is. This is new to all of us. We all deserve a mulligan or two on this in general, but this, I would agree with Ed, this just is not functioning the way I think it function should function. We aren't getting people on board. We aren't, we're putting together committees to to make recommendations to follow protocol. And then within one, the next meeting, we're being asked to to overturn that, and I can't wrap my mind around that. That's what I really struggle with. The protocol here, but then, on the other hand, for any, for people who are listening or will review this, I'm also trying to balance, since it has been said, there, there hasn't been enough spoken about what's the best thing for the students. We have to keep that in mind also. So trying to keep both of those in mind with the protocol that we're following is just not working. Not working. But I I don't think it's up to the board to solve that problem. I think we have a, an admin that we've put in place, and it's for them to to find the best path, the best recommendations to give to us, but I I think we really need to think about protocol here. Any other questions or comments?
I mean, Ed, is there, and again, I I very sympathetic to our desire to change our role as a board in this process. And what we're the framework that we're creating for our admin team. Is there anything concrete that you would like to see as a proposed amendment to the fairly basic motion that's on the table right now for the approval of the plan as is? Is there something that would help structurally? And I guess it can be somewhat boiled down concisely to amend that motion.
All right, I'm sorry, Carl, was that directed at me? I missed that part. I'm sorry.
Yeah, kind of. Just curious if if there is something that you would like to officially amend to an approval of the hard start plan?
Yeah, I would, I I guess I I would like to see us hand the keys of the decision-making on on, I I, let me put that back into a different way. Go back to my original thought was that essentially, let's set a goal. That we want our kids back in full-time instruction. It's also set a goal that we have all of our staff on board that that they enjoy the opportunity to feel free and safe to come back, as well as the ability for all of our kids to be free to to either enter or exit the program as they see fit. I think that having the kids back full-time kind of takes away some of the the arguments that were made. I think that all of us have gotten to the point where we understand that the metrics that that we thought were hard hard lines in the sand are are something that it seems that every time that we call down there, they're willing to move that bar for us. I I think, and I think that, I don't think that we've been very well served by the, by the the Board of Health either in this process. I just, I I really feel like that we ought to go back to a more goal-oriented motion that essentially talks about where we want to be and essentially ends these kinds of meetings and these kinds of discussions in public for us. The responsibility for that lies in the district office from that point forward.
So would I be accurate in if I summarized by saying I think the current motion as it stands of just approving the hard start plan explicitly is maybe kind of incompatible with some of those goals, then?
I don't know if it's incompatible or not, or I'm, that's what I'm trying to get my head around, as I'm sitting here thinking, how could, how could we bond the two things together to make one a definitive supportive of a motion that's on on board while making the other part of that motion a more goal, goal-oriented environment for for everyone? Maybe the thing to do is to vote up or down on the, on the one with at least the the promise, I guess, that we get a second, that we get to have a discussion on a more goal-oriented second part to that. Rather than trying to amend something that that I, that I struggled to see how the two of them blend together.
Sure. Structurally, can we do that, Joe? Can we? Do we have the room for multiple motions on a single agenda item? Can we continue this conversation after?
Sure. No, I I believe that's fully within our right to do, because all of those issues are on the agenda. I think we can make as many motions related to the re-return to school as possible. Does anybody disagree?
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree. That I I'd like to hand more of this over to the admin team, but as far as this motion goes, it, you know, it's kind of hard to tie those together. You know, without more discussion about how we're going to turn it over to the admin team, I think that might be something for our next board meeting. I think that'd be a great discussion point and something that we you know, which should start moving towards. But I'd also like to have a a direction for our district to start moving, our parents and staff to start moving, be ready for next semester here too.
I guess that brings us to a point, does anybody need to ask for any further clarification to 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 help them make this decision? We have a a motion and a second. Any? Mike, you've heard a lot about the meeting last Tuesday. And I guess I do need to hear from you how you, in your mind, navigate from everything we went through to get you the vote in November. A return to school vote in November. The need to go through the committee to follow protocol, we did a lot, there was, that was a lot of work. Some might not have agreed with the those on the committee, they might not have felt the efficacy was as high, the opinions were all over the place, but we went, we followed a protocol. We're often reminded we need to follow protocol, put these things through committee. How did, how did you go from that, following that protocol to last Tuesday? Where we're essentially throwing that out?
I guess really just working with administrative teams, getting feedback, working with the Boone County Health Department, speaking with others that are in the know regarding certain situations, and then in the end, trying to say what is best for kids to try to get them back in school. That's what brought it forward.
Okay. Can I also? Any other questions?
I guess it, not necessarily a question, but just a comment to reinforce that or at least respond to just what Brian had just said a little bit earlier there about potentially delaying the conversation to the next board meeting. I think it's not really part of a vote, and it's, it's not really part of anything structurally, as far as a commitment goes, but I think it does make a lot of sense that we acknowledge that. I think there's enough of us on the board that feel the mechanics of what has happened over the past meeting or two and month or two is not something that we wish to see repeated. And so making sure that we emphasize that, and I don't know if this helps you, Ed, make a decision about how you would vote on something tonight. But really emphasizing, making us a commitment to revisit this as soon as possible. And especially as, I know that this deadline of the 19th is fairly close to our next board meeting, so I don't know that a lot will change between getting our kids back if we end up voting and approving a hard start. getting our kids back if we end up voting and approving a hard start. But as numbers in the counties change, we have a big holiday coming up. You know, we, we very well could be facing swings and changes in numbers and changes in the logistics in our buildings and schools. Once kids are back in that we do want to be able to revisit some of this stuff, or we want to have already had the conversation about the autonomy that we've given our administrative team. So I really want to emphasize that I don't, personally don't want to let that topic drop at all. If not tonight, then it needs to be covered and readdressed in as soon as, as we can as a board.
That's where I'd kind of like to be. I mean, I kind of, I kind of feel like the tying this, this motion together with what we do next, um. If we wait and, and to have this conversation for another month, um, A, we run the risk of allowing the pandemic again to dictate the discussion and, and, and what we should and couldn't be doing. Um, and maybe we waste the opportunity to, uh, to begin to, to dip our toe, uh, and see what exactly that looks like and get a sense of going forward where we might need to be, what modifications that we might need to make to whatever we decide.
The only thing that I would add to what's being said is that if you guys want to meet next week, if you want to meet the meet week after that to discuss MOUs, to discuss giving the administration team more autonomy, schedule the meetings. I, I, I feel that that's the direction to go. I think that's, um, but I wouldn't say that that has to be a month out there. Schedule as many as you want and let's get these, these topics covered in what would be in a timely manner and in an appropriate form, but.
Joe, would you like to work with a small group on that and get it up and started?
Uh, uh, on what?
What that should look like, what Ed is talking about?
I guess I don't see how that could be anything but with the whole board.
Okay.
That, does any board member disagree, agree with that?
I, I agree with you, Joe. I think that's something that, uh, we as a board need to decide together and communicate with, uh, Mike about, so. And a- also I'd be up for meetings whenever you can get scheduled to discuss the, the next steps here.
Agreed.
Not that it has to be with or without me, but, uh, I plan on marrying a daughter next week, so, um, I might be somewhat preoccupied. So, um, if you guys feel, if, if it turns out that, that that's something that you, that you feel strongly about, um, just please know that, uh, I kind of have, uh, other priorities that I have, that have to take, take precedence, so, um. And, and again, I, I'm arguing for a more gor- goal-oriented approach to where it is that we go next, um. Speaking very clearly and articulately about what it is that we want to see done and handing that process over, uh, and, and getting away from these kind of meetings where it just, I said that, uh, I, I can't overstated enough. I, I feel like a really, really important line got crossed Tuesday night. I think a, a lot of damage has been done to this, this board relationship that we have with the group. Um, I think it's probably going to manifest itself someplace else at some point along the line. And if we don't do something quickly to move ourselves, you know, in another direction, I don't really know, I don't, I don't really know where this is going to end up. Quite frankly, so, uh, I, I can't stress enough the need for us to put some thought into what we do next, um, and how we handle it.
I agree. We should, um, maybe try to figure out a way to give Mike and the admin team some more, uh, autonomy on this. But I also think maybe we can push it back until after the first of the year. Um, I think everybody has a lot on their plate the next couple of weeks. Um, I know I've got my hands full, um, and I think everybody else has a lot of things going on in the next couple of weeks. Maybe we can start working on this after the first of the year.
I actually think there's a lot of value in that. Mary, I was thinking the same thing. I didn't, I, I didn't want what I had going on to influence what everybody else was, was thinking, but, um, certainly maybe some cooler heads have prevailed on, um, and maybe there'll be more, be more introspective about where it is that we want to be, uh, versus just.
Just been a, a very long stressful year for everyone involved, um. And I, I just think maybe a little break might do everybody good and we can come back with some, a little bit of a fresh view on this and, um, yeah, we don't have a playbook for this. We're writing it.
Mary, maybe that's a good lead in for one last thing that I want to say about protocol. We, we, th- this, I get in many ways there isn't a playbook, but we have policies and protocols in place. Uh, and I feel like we, we did our due diligence with the return to school committee and I, I might also maybe disagree with that a little bit in the aspect that Mike has always had the autonomy to do. Nobody has told him he, he, he's gotten every vote he's asked for uh, so far on this. Um, we have a return to school plan that we voted on in, in November. Uh, I, I thought that was the end of it. I thought it was out of our hands. I thought that the board is, is no longer going to be in the way. Uh, but on Tuesday, it seemed to, we were in the way again, and here we are again, being, being asked to, to make this momentous decision. Um, and I, I do want to say, we haven't mentioned, I have personally haven't mentioned enough. I do want to see kids back that want to be back and parents that want their kids back in school. I want to see that happen, but we absolutely, I think it is possible for Mike to bring his staff onboard. And that MOU discussion, I am disheartened by, by the fact that this, we've discussed this in the past. It wasn't addressed in the past. It wasn't presented to us succinctly that the decision needed to be made back then. Um, I, I think we leave our staff out of this discussion too far in, in my opinion, in, in this vote. I think we're moving forward with something we had that, that followed metrics and made the most people possible comfortable. And now we're moving away from those metrics. And I hear, hear those voices. Parents have been given the chance to keep their kids out of school. Uh, we've got kids that are in school. I would like to see more of them in school and I'd like to see them in more in time. I think we're a small enough district to give, get our staff every opportunity to make sure that they are comfortable also. And I don't think we've done our due diligence there, folks. So I, I'm, I'm not going to be in on this one all again. Um, but I want to make it clear, it has nothing to do with not getting our kids in school. I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to see Mike bring more plans. Uh, uh, I would assume there are going to be more plans. I was surprised when I heard that. I don't look forward to those meetings. I have a feeling I already know how they're going to turn out, that something will be presented, we'll mull it over for a while and it'll still be uncomfortable. Uh, and I want to thank everybody for their time, everything they've invested. And Mary's right, this is not diffi- this is not easy and there is no playbook in many ways, but I, I think we need to bring the staff onboard and that's the only thing that's keeping me out on this vote. Any other discussion or?
I'd just like to, hopefully by, at the first of the year, we'll have a better idea of when the vaccine will be available for our staff as well. Um, I feel like that's a kind of a, at least somewhat of a game changer.
True. Let me get my paperwork ready if we're ready to take a vote. Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Heverly?
No.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
No.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Agenda for tonight. Any other questions, comments, uh, announcements? Any other items according to the agenda, I guess?
Before we adjourn, do we want to set a special meeting up to discuss? The, given the district, um, autonomy to come up with, um, additional plans or additional things, or can that wait till the next regular scheduled meeting? And maybe, Mike, that's a question for you.
And actually, that's, that's actually the, the reason that I voted no. I don't want this to be something that's presented us. I want for the first time for us to lay out our goals and our plans and give the feedback to the admin team to execute this plan. I don't want a plan, I don't want any more plans presented to me. I'm done.
Then it is, we still have to meet as a board then, Ed. Do you want to wait for the next regular meeting to do it, or do you want a special meeting?
I, I think the sooner we can have these discussions about her.
Then can we, the superintendent and the board president try to get a date where we can meet between now and the next board meeting?
I can do that if that's the will of the board. Um, Ed, uh, I'm going to need a good amount of input from you, what you'd like to see and, and everybody. What, what that would look like and how we would go about that.
I guess what I would encourage you to do is not think about it as, as the details, but to think of it as the broad picture. What do we want to see accomplished? How do we want to see our, how do we want to see our staff interacted with? How do we want to see our parents and kids interacted with? What are our, what's our ultimate goal? I don't necessarily want to get down into the specific details of all of those things. I, I, I would like to see us dictate the plan and let somebody fi- else figure out how to execute what we want versus, um, something being presented to us.
That might, uh, and I feel maybe it's my due diligence to ask the rest of the board, uh, informal poll, is that the way we'd like to go?
Go as in calling a special meeting?
Uh, a special meeting and for us to, to follow Ed's suggestion there that we, we give some end goals and leave the specifics to the admin team.
I think that sounds like a really good topic for the special meeting.
Okay.
Would that be something that when we talk about a board retreat, that it's more? While you want to talk that specific big issue, board relations and how much autonomy they give the superintendent or the administrative team is more of a philosophy for the board. In general, or do you want to just leave it for this one topic and have a special meeting? Or you're going to have a new board coming in, um, in a couple of months? Is that something that you would want to talk about for that? And it's, and then so just keep this as a specifically on return to school.
I think we need focus on the return. My own view is that we need to focus on the return to school part for, for right now. There'll be time for the other, for the other, uh, due time.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
No, I, I would second that.
Does anybody wish to discuss that in a broader sense? I guess we don't want to lose that time. So I would ask Mike, uh, what are your intentions now, Mike? You have your option one approved?
We'll start to make communications and talk to the administrators tomorrow, moving forward.
And, uh, for any other plans?
I think I'm kind of waiting for what the board discussion is.
All right. Uh, so then we are setting up a special meeting to discuss special meeting to discuss return to school goals. But, but at that point in time, Mike, whenever that occurs, if you have another plan in mind, you will be bringing general ideas of, of get, you've heard, I think, of a fairly clear directive to get more students in sooner. Will there be no discussions of what that would look like between then and now?
We can hold those discussions. We will review exactly what we talked about tonight, Joe. And then I'll, I'll bring forward what we have. But this was just put to me now, so I, I'd need to formulate what I want to do and the next steps I want to take.
I guess I'm, now I'm, I got cut out of the meeting there for a second, but now I'm, I don't know if I'm in agreement with what Ed's proposing. But I certainly want to give it a hearing and, and discuss it. But if Ed suggests this and then he very specifically says, I don't want the administration to bring a plan, then why are we immediately then going to offer Ed a plan that he wants to be, to generate? I thought I followed what was going on, but I apparently am not.
January 19th is our next meeting. Right? Yeah. January 19th would be our next meeting date if we're going to meet before then. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up when our next meeting is. Again, Tom, I, I don't, I am at a loss. I, I don't even know what to say at this point because it was my understanding this was the last plan going into this meeting tonight. This was the last plan to be presented. So discussions of a further plan are a surprise to me. And I, again, kind of thought that after this vote, then we start working and there will be no further changes, but that, that may not be the case.
Okay. Just so that I'm clear. I think I agree with Brian and I think I am for empowering the administration to get more kids in more classes if they can between now and the end of the school year. So in my mind, I don't mind the administrative team taking that as I'm all for it. You're not going to waste your time in generating some kind of plan like that. But if that's not what another board member wants and he would rather the board kind of come and give Mike a general goal on how to go, I'm open to that too. I don't know if I agree with it, but I'll certainly give it a listen. That's what I just don't under- I can see how we confuse the administrative team because I, I feel like I'm hearing something, we agree to it. And then we're going away and, and going exactly opposite of what the board member is asking for.
I guess where I'm at, Tom, is I don't feel like that we've done a very good job of articulating how we want, where we want this to end up. And so, um, as far as dictating a plan or having plans presented to us, I, I think that when you, when you, when you build gor- goal-oriented policies, it starts with identifying what the goals are, what everybody wants out of it. And that you trust the people below you to execute those goals. Uh, I, I think that that's what I, where I was advocating for, um, that those plans would be developed, but, uh, I think that we need to speak with a clear voice about what it is that we want and where we want, what we anticipate happening and, and go from there.
I, I guess my only concern, Ed, is I, I don't disagree with you on that. In my mind, when I think of goals, if I were to roll back time till June of last year, that would have been where I was coming up with goals for the 2020, 2021 school year. In my mind, we are much more, less strategic right now and more tactical that anything that we change or the administration changes between now and the end of the school year to bring more kids in, they have to be more agile and be able to do it. So I, I, I don't know how we, we would give goals in such for something that is so near term and, um, has to be agile, has to be practical. We, we just, what I would want and envision may not, these, you know, these folks may have talked about it and it may be a non-starter and that's, so I, that's why I'm interested in hearing what you're saying. I'm interested in, in doing that and, and seeing what the administration team says, but I, I having trouble picturing how it would work. But I'm all for it, but I, I think at least we need to speak as a voice. Do we want more what Brian said? Or do we want more what Ed is saying? And then we know what we're going to have a meeting about.
If I can interject just one second too, I- If I can interject just one second, too, I I I'm not sure I see those things. I don't know that I see Brian and and Ed as being incompatible with each other here because I think what we've run into is a not insignificant portion of the board in an attempt to be more agile. That's what we experienced last week, but with a cumbersome process and an established precedent already set. And I know I've I've said this before, so I don't want to repeat myself. But I think if I'm getting the spirit of what Ed's saying is he wants to have that philosophical conversation about what our goals are as the board in order to not not say, all right, Mike, come back to us with a specific plan to meet those goals, but to give him an operating framework in which to make more agile pivoting decisions like you and Brian are saying so that we aren't put in the position of attempting to fit a cumbersome inefficient process to meet the demands of what needs to be more agile in the future.
Yeah, that's actually the exactly the same thing and and much more eloquent we said, Carl, than I probably could have got it out. But I guess I I was trying to think back to what I what I might have said or indicated that was was significantly different than where Brian was. I actually kind of took it that the two things were actually quite complimentary of each other. And I and I saw it as an opportunity to maybe maybe build on something quickly. So that so we have a different operating parameter to move to work under going forward. So like I said, I I don't know that there's anybody on the board that that doesn't necessarily agree that this is not working the way that any of us thought it would. Maybe our expectations of what we thought we'd get out of this are are not realistic. But and then it's the same time to kind of go back to something that Tom said, you know, talk about making huge changes in what we did. I mean, you talk about the last 30 days of what we've what we've done, where we've come in 30 days. So I don't know that anything that we do for going forward is any more monumental than what we've already done. So um I just I just think that we need to set on a different path that the community understands um our our stated goal. Um and then they see plans that are getting executed uh based on on that stated goal.
How could our, how would our goals be any different than what we've already given Mike, Ed?
Yeah, I don't I don't know that. I mean, that, so I was thinking back to my role on Tuesday night and I was trying to reflect. I mean, Mike and I had a rather heated conversation, um to be frank. We both were colleagues for a while um uh. But I reflect back on my part of that. I don't know that we ever actually told Mike uh really where we wanted to be in all of this. I think I think I personally fell into the idea that we just react to whatever happens and and um our plan kind of flows based on the the next news or the next big thing that comes down the pipeline from the news organizations or from from health organizations that were trying to figure this out. And I don't know that it maybe we wouldn't have been better served to have been in a position as maybe Tom said back in June where we started identifying where we wanted to be and 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 uh tact strategically looked at this rather than, as Tom suggested, tactically decided where we wanted to be. But I don't know that I don't know that I've heard us say as a board, we want our kids back in school. And maybe maybe we wouldn't have been there three or four months ago. I I can't answer that. But uh I I I think that I think that that helps us get to a different place than we are right now. But that's just my view. I'm not saying I'm right or wrong, but I'm just, I'm saying how I feel about this, where we are today.
I guess what I'm struggling with is to understand how, if we're if we're sending that message, and I think we are, and I think we always have been, but we're dependent on Mike bringing us his plans. And I'm not sure how I can see this changing any. He already knows. I think he wants to see as many kids in school as possible also. That would that be true, Mike?
Yeah, that's what we've been trying to do all along, but do it safely, yeah.
So I don't know how are that would be any any different, although I'm willing, more than willing to have the conversations. What I'm thinking about though is that we lose a month, whatever it takes to have that next meeting. If Mike isn't already working on a next plan to get more students, if he needs us to have a special meeting to give him a directive to get more students in school, why would, why wouldn't we have been working on that a month ago? And I feel like we sort of have been reacting.
I guess we're we're what I would argue on that, Joe, and I argue is probably the wrong term. But when we voted to approve the plan that was put in place, um essentially, we're not doing anything different until the 19th. So from a strategic standpoint, the opportunity to take a step back and and have a meeting, we've essentially set in place what's going to happen uh between now and January 19th with the vote that we took tonight and and there probably is an opportunity to have a special meeting and get something else in place for when that for when after January 19th.
Mike, do you need any more information? Any more of a direction?
No, I think it can be hashed out when we sit down and talk.
All right, if there are no other discussion points, I just need a motion and a second to adjourn. And feel free to bring anything else up you wish, if if you have something else to bring up.
I just, I did want to make one comment before we left for break uh that we have been using the school lunches being delivered on our busses. And I wanted to say a really public thank you to all the drivers who've been moving the food around to the district and to also put in a plug that we have some um unsung artists in our food services and the amount of artwork on the lunchwork, uh the lunch bags that have been coming into our house has been tremendous and increasingly complex as the semester has gone along. So uh my compliments to all the folks that are bagging lunches and getting food ready for the kids because the art has been a lot of fun to see uh at our house here.
Thanks, Carl. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Hazelhurst?
Second.
Second by Maxie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right, thank you, folks. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Too cloudy, go out and try and check out those planets.